We please the highest education for our play. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have here this evening. Lord, we ask that you bless us on the City Commission in making the decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens. Lord, we ask that you bless all those attendees this evening and please, Lord, bless all of our city staff and all their families, in particular, all of our first responders. For all these things, we ask in thy most gracious heavenly name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like to welcome all here this evening. First, from the agenda is approval of the amendments in my regular meeting on Paper 11. They have been distributed. Are there any additions, violations, or corrections? Here we have, we need a motion. We have a motion approved. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Resolution twenty-four dash oh nine.
Resolution twenty-four dash oh nine, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, declaring the results of the municipal runoff election held on April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four for City Commissioner District Two. Authorizing issuance of certificates and other such matters is permitted by law.
Thank you. City Court, defend.
Yes, sir. Just as Dan stated, Resolution twenty-four oh nine declares results of the twenty twenty-four runoff election held April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This election was for selecting a commissioner for District Two. For the record, I'd like to read the results. The qualified candidates for the runoff election were Iliana R. Jones and Ron Mueller. Out of seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six registered voters, one thousand and ninety-one cast their votes in this election. Iliana R. Jones received fifty-two point six one percent of the votes cast and is duly elected to serve. Her opponent, Ron Mueller, received forty-seven point thirty-nine percent of those votes cast. The official certification of this election took place on Friday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, by the City of Winter Garden Election Council Board, as noted in your agenda packet. With that, staff would recommend approval of Resolution twenty-four oh nine and request authorization to issue certificate of election to the duly elected Iliana R. Jones as Commissioner District Two. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the commission? If not, we need a motion. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Anything you'd like to say, ma'am? I think the president is black with you here as a service.
I just, it was an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your merciessence and your classy oath.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll go to the oath of office for Commissioner District Two.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will support
That I will support
Protect and defend
Protect and defend
The Constitution and government
The Constitution and government
Of the United States
Of the United States
And of the state of Florida
And of the state of Florida
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified
To hold office under
To hold office under
The Constitution of the state
The Constitution of the state
And that I will
And that I will
Well and faithfully perform
Well and faithfully perform
The duties of Commissioner
The duties of Commissioner
On which I am now
On which I am now
About to enter
About to enter
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ron, for your three years of service and welcome Iliana to the commission.
Thank you.
Come on. Next, we do proclamation twenty-four oh four. I think Mr. Gilbert is going to say a few words.
Just a great few words. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As you know, we have Public Service Month here and we also have a Public Service Week. And I've asked Cheryl Jones, our Human Resources Director, to come up and describe what we're going to be doing for our employees during that time. And she's also going to introduce a new step. She's not behind me. So.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm Cheryl Jones and this is our new Human Resources and Risk Manager, Kimberly Alvin. We just wanted to take a few minutes to speak with you about Public Services Recognition Month of May. It really is an important time for us to demonstrate our value and appreciation toward our employees. We do have some fun events coming up. You know, they, they really demonstrate such a commitment to our city and the contributions they make that we're looking forward to some of these events. We have our local Kelly's Ice Cream. We'll have an ice cream event specifically during the first week of May. So we're very excited about that. We'll have some other events going on such as some drawings for gift baskets and things of that nature. So we're really looking forward to a fun time with our employees for the month of May. I did want to take an opportunity to, to thank the Mayor, City Commission, and the City Manager for their support of these events. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if I can read proclamation twenty-four dash oh four. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated the first week of May since nineteen eighty-five to honor government employees who serve our nation. And whereas the city recognizes generous contribution of time and talent by our employees and the importance of daily services provided to protect and improve the quality of life for our citizens, businesses, and visitors. And whereas our public employees serve in areas such as public safety, public services, water, and utility supply and treatment, parks and recreation, community planning, internal service departments, and countless other occupations. And whereas the City of Winter Garden's employees are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of professional excellence, creativity, skills, and customer service. And whereas the City of Winter Garden values and celebrates our employees and their dedication and commitment to the continuity and efficiencies of our vital resources and essential services that are instrumental to the success of our city. And therefore, it's my great pleasure and privilege as the Mayor of the City of Winter Garden to declare the week of May the sixth through the tenth, twenty twenty-four, as Public Service Recognition Week. I urge all citizens to join me in supporting this initiative and to take the time, not only during the month of May, but throughout the year, to recognize the accomplishments, benefits, and contributions of our city employees for health, safety, and quality of life. Next, which is not on the agenda, we will open proclamation twenty-four dash oh six. Whereas throughout history, America has faced trials and triumphs, and Americans have responded in prayer, seeking courage and comfort, inspiration, joy filled celebration. Faith compels us to seek and claim to the light in times of darkness and spread light to those indeed. And whereas from the first gatherings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and entreated those they served and represented to join them in prayer, including the authors of our Declaration of Independence, wrote that they, representatives of the United States of America and General Congress, assembled appealing to the spring judge of the world and carried on to present vague presidential proclamations such as last year's invitation to join him in asking for God's continued guidance, mercy, and protection. And whereas the National Day of Prayer has not only been a part of our heritage, but was declared by the First Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five, but is a public law established in the United States Congress in nineteen fifty-two, approved by joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law one hundred dash three oh seven in nineteen eighty-eight, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as the National Day of Prayer. And whereas in every state across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May the second, twenty twenty-four, with the theme "Lift Up the Word, Lift Up the World", based on the verses found in Second Samuel twenty-two, twenty-nine to thirty-one. For you are my lamp, O Lord, and my God lightens my darkness. This God, his way is perfect. The word of the Lord proves true. He is a shield for all those who take refuge in him. And whereas unified prayers mobilized across America, every first Thursday of May, on the National Day of Prayer, neighbors come together to join their hearts and voices in reading sacred scriptures and attending services to seek God in the city and county where we live, learn, work, worship, and serve, and desire all to thrive. And whereas we express our faith and exercise our freedom in prayer, then unite our hearts and voices in personal prayer and public gatherings across America with frequent prays, repentance, love, and humble intercession for our neighbor and nation, pointing fast to the promises throughout the Holy Scriptures that the Lord hears and avails much as the answers of faithful prayers is given. Therefore, it's my great pleasure as the Mayor of the City of Winter Garden to proclaim May the second, twenty twenty-four, as a National Day of Prayer throughout the City of Winter Garden and commend your terms to all of our citizens.
Amen.
Amen.
Next, we'll do First Reading Public Hearing, those ordinance, ordinance twenty-four dash oh nine.
Ordinance twenty-four dash oh nine, ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending Chapter Seventy, Telecommunications, Article One, and General. City of Winter Garden Code of Ordinances to add requirements for right-of-way permit applicants and registration requirements for communication services providers providing for codification, conflict, survivability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This ordinance, as Dan said, amends Chapter Seventy of the City Code for communication service providers and facilities in the right-of-way. It requires that these service providers register with the city. They provide copies of their insurance and provide authorization for any subcontractor who's pulling permits under their name. The ordinance also requires a cash escrow, which would be returned two hundred days after all work is completed and we have verified that there is no advantages. Cash bond would be ten percent of the estimated installation cost, which would be reviewed by the city engineer and they could provide to us, or a maximum of two point five million dollars. There are currently some very large fiber optics companies, I'm sure you've all seen on the news. They're out there, so their installation is, is quite expensive. They're planning to do citywide. This bond money may be used by the city to make these repairs. If they don't make those repairs within a reasonable timeframe, they will need to enter into that agreement. And in that agreement, it will specify the timeframe. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine. Second reading scheduled for May ninth.
Questions from the commission? Self-intermediated. This is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing. If there are any comments? Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
My commotions are approved. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine, second reading of public hearing, May second.
May ninth.
May ninth.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen.
Ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending Chapter Forty-six, Fire Prevention and Protection, City of Winter Garden Code of Ordinances to delete Section Forty-six dash sixty-one, burn permits, and then Section Forty-six dash seventy-seven. Auto-matic fire protection system required, providing for codification, conflict, survivability, and effective date.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This ordinance would amend Chapter Forty-six of the city's Code of Ordinances. It removes the section related to burn permits as the city no longer issues them. Instead, all burn permits are now issued through the state of Florida Forestry Service. The ordinance also amends Section Forty-six and seventy-seven to revise the building square footage requirement for sprinklers in commercial buildings. The new requirement reflects current department practices and specifics when automatic sprinklers must be installed and maintained in commercial structures. FD staff recommends that you approve this amendment.
Questions from the commission? Here we have, once again, this is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak? Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Move to approve ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen, with the second reading of public hearing for May ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. This ordinance, ordinance twenty-four dash eleven, twenty-four dash twelve.
Ordinance twenty-four dash eleven, ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden complex planned by changing the Miami's destination of the property generally described as approximately zero point two six plus minus acres located at one-one East Cypress Street, East of Dillard Street, west of Winters Street, north of East Palmetto Street, and south of East Story Road from low density residential to commercial, providing for survivability and providing for an effective date. Ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, the ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, resuming approximately zero point two six plus minus acres located at one-one East Cypress Street, east of Dillard Street, west of Winters Street, north of East Palmetto Street, and south of East Story Road from R two residential district to C two arterial commercial district, providing for survivability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request for future land use amendment and rezoning for a property located at one fourteen East Cypress Street. The total property size is point five two acres, but currently has split zoning. The western point two six acres is zone C two and has a commercial future land use. And the eastern point two six acres is zone R two and has a low density residential future land use. The applicant is requesting to rezone the eastern point two six acres to C two and change the future land use to commercial in order to make it consistent, balanced, and property. Staff has agreed the application. It recommends approval and adoption of ordinances twenty-four dash eleven and twenty-four dash twelve. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission? I assume nobody still wants the nineteen-ten house?
Unfortunately.
Okay. Just want to make sure the heritage, nobody wants it. I don't think it can even move.
Very carefully.
Okay. This is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak? Saying none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Move to approve ordinance twenty-four dash eleven. Yeah, twenty-four twelve. Give the time, twenty-four twelve. Yes, sir.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Regular business, resolution twenty-four dash eight seven.
Resolution twenty-four dash oh seven, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, establishing the city of Winter Garden investment policy, establishing investment objectives, establishing delegation of authority, establishing authorized financial institution, and dealers, providing, establishing recording requirements, establishing authorized investments, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This resolution updates the current investment policy for the city. The city's investment advisor, P F A, P F M Asset Management, has updated the investment policy to incorporate the updated legal statute language and the current market conditions. Steph has reviewed the policy and is recommending approval of Resolution twenty-four dash zero seven.
Questions from the commission? Basically, we're just updating this to comply with the state, the state regulations.
Current language.
Yep, okay. No questions. We need a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero seven.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Recommendation approved, next due for the State Division of Emergency Management statewide mutual aid agreement. Chief, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners again. The statewide mutual aid agreement for twenty twenty-three establishes a framework for local governments of Florida to request and provide emergency assistance in times of disasters and emergencies that exceed our own response capabilities. The agreement replaces, places provisions and remains active until now, until a new one is drafted. It is based on the recognition that emergencies exceed the capabilities of individual local governments and that mutual aid agreements can ensure tightening assistance and reimbursement of costs. The agreement defines key terms, outlines the process for requesting and providing assistance, and establishes responsibilities for both requesting and assisting parties. It also includes provisions for reimbursement of costs incurred during the assistance and specifies the agreement does not create employer or employee relationships or wage sovereign immunity. Fire Department staff recommends approving the authorization to sign the statewide mutual aid agreement.
Questions from the commission?
Move to approve, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Recommendation approved, distribution, the JAG grant. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We were able to acquire residual funds from a twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant and we're requesting to use those funds for range supplies, targeting systems. And basically, staff recommends you approve the distribution of the award refunding, which would be nine thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars to purchase the firing range supplies and equipment. We had to allow for public comment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gooing tree?
That's one of them.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure exactly what that is, but okay. Any questions from the commission? We need a motion.
I think we need public comment.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. We will open this up for public comment. Saying none, we will close. We need a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Recommendation approved and ratified, proposed International Association of Firefighters B Group Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Yes? Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, of course, is the approval and ratification of the I A F F B Group Collective Bargaining Agreement for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Before I get into the details, I'd like to just thank some people. One is the I A F F themselves. Now, they're usually very cooperative and very helpful. And battalion chiefs all weighed in on this and thought it was great. And also, we have the H R staff basically put this whole thing together and worked very hard, you know, to make sure that it would be workable for everybody. So, thank you, H R staff. Okay, there is a few acronyms in this presentation, so I'll quickly describe what they reference in the opening paragraph. The International Association of Firefighters Local Four Nine Four Seven, referred herein as I A F F, was certified as the exclusive bargaining representative for the city's fire battalion chiefs, referred to herein as B Cs, battalion chiefs. And after negotiating in good faith with the I A F F B Group consisting of three battalion chiefs, the city tentatively agreed to a new contract. The A group contract was what was used as the basis for the B contract. So there was really, you know, very little differences between the two. So I'd like to also let you know that the B group contract will run concurrently with the current A contract beginning March eighteenth and run through September thirtieth with a financial impact of approximately eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. So very low impact financially. So I'm going to go through these. I'm not going to read each one of these because I know it was a lengthy email that I sent you all. But I am just going to get the highlights of each article so that you'll understand, you know, what we did and how we did it. For union business, we remove the language providing the ability to meet with new employees for one hour during the employees' orientation week, as that's now performed by the I A F F B Group, actually always was, but they're still doing it. Article five, hours of work and work back. It codifies the battalion chiefs as exempt, this pay cycle and the twenty-four, forty-eight shift, when they are eligible for work back and additional pay. Also provides opportunities to work certain coverages such as instructor pay and special events. Article ten, employee leave and benefits. Codifies the existing practice that B Cs will receive any changes in the annual leave time as the A group would get. Let's see, scope of duties. It defines the battalion chiefs managerial duties, basically saying that they will act while on duty in uniform and represent the city in the best interest of the city. Article fourteen, wages. And there's a few changes here, but they're all minor, but I am going to just go through them real quick. It codifies that the B Cs will receive the same annual wage increase a penny as the citywide wage increase provided to all other city employees. It codifies that the B Cs receive an annualized paramedic incentive of nine thousand twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents for solo certified and four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents for non-solo certified paramedics. It's added to their basic wages by play. Codify the existing B C two and B C three career tracker incentives, but increase the rate for B C from ninety cents to a dollar twenty-six and B C three level for a dollar forty-five to two oh three to account for the fact that the payroll system calculates the B C pay based on working two thousand eighty hours, even though they do actually work two thousand nine hundred and twelve. And also codifies that the battalion chiefs will be reimbursed for costs associated with professional development certifications that are required by the city to meet or maintain their career tracker or their position in the, in the fire department. Okay, removed. And I'm just going to go down the bullet points. I'm not going to say what they were. But we previously had fourteen point two, fourteen point five, fourteen point six, fourteen point eight, fourteen point nine, and fourteen ten. We're all removed because they don't apply to the battalion chiefs. Time trades removed because it does not relate to battalion chiefs either. And holiday pay, that we had a language that the city will pay battalion chiefs who work a city-recognized holiday an additional eight hours for that day. Current practice, they're paid eight hours on the holiday pay whether or not they work on that day or not. Light duty provides for clarification on calculating pay for light duty should they be injured on the job. And the entire agreement, which is Article thirty, and by the way, that is Article twenty-five, light duty. In Article thirty, the entire agreement, it just changes the dates so that the A group is aligned with the B group and they all are the same contract period. Okay? So attached, you'll also find the proposed I A F F B group contract, which the I A F F B Group ratified on February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Three fire battalion chiefs voted with all three agreeing to the proposal. Staff recommends approval and ratification of the proposed I A F F B Group Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission?
Are the guys in the front lines happy with it? How much, how many voted approve? Majority? All of them?
All three.
All right.
Yep. Okay. Any questions? Thank y'all for that and the fire and our city staff. So we need a motion.
Move to approve the agreement, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation approved purchase order for R C M Utilities. Yes, sir.
This is a purchase order to install a new electric panel and generator at lift station twenty-five. That's the generator, the lift station at the north end of Park Avenue.
So moved. I'm sorry.
Last year, we, purchasing the generator unfortunately did not include it in the wiring.
We kind of need this, though. Yes, we need it. It's a order that we bought.
Staff would recommend approval to hire R C M Utilities O L C of bid in fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
So moved, Mayor.
So moved. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. It's a good way of getting through this. Recommendation approved purchase order for Veolia Water Technologies. Yes?
This purchase order for Veolia Tech, uh, Veolia Water Technologies Incorporated to repair the disc filters at the wastewater treatment plant. Repairs included in replacing the sprocket, press switch, as well as three hundred automatic cleaning and nozzles across those filters. Staff would recommend approval. Uh, staff would recommend approval to, uh, issue a purchase order for Veolia Technologies to repair the disc filters for sixty-six thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Questions from the commission?
These are expensive. Necessary three hundred of those.
Everything at that point is expensive.
But necessary.
Uh, everything we're seeing is double the cost pre-cooperated.
Yeah. The wastewater free. When we get it moved, get a, have a new facility at a different location, it'll be great. We need a motion.
So moved, move it.
Move to approve the, uh, the funding on that, and what's the amount here?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six, five oh seven, fifty-nine.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve purchase order with Murray Design Group for Marsh Road Landscape and Irrigation Services. Yes, sir?
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Uh, we recently finished the reconstruction of Marsh Road, uh, and we also installed the traffic calming, uh, measures down further west. Uh, those two designs did not include landscape and irrigation. Uh, the Murray Design Group will create plans for landscaping the corridor to Bufi and assist with the traffic calming measures between the two projects. Staff would recommend approving a PO for Murray Design Group for landscaping and irrigation along Marsh Road in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars. Now, we have to answer any questions.
It's a move.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Before Commissioner Sharpe and Ram runs us through. Go ahead.
So moved, mayor.
Who's got a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve professional service agreement with King Design.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. When the city adopted the East Winter Garden Plan in twenty eighteen, one of the action items was to revise the zoning code to better guide the development and redevelopment of the historic East Winter Garden neighborhood. We have been working with planner Jason King for many years on planning initiatives in the area, including on the East Winter Garden Plan and the East Winter Garden Plan Updates. You probably remember Jason at those meetings, he led all of them. Uh, Jason has submitted a proposal for his firm, King Design Collaborative, to help complete the task of creating a new form-based code for this area. The scope of work includes multiple community meetings and lots of engagement with the neighborhood to collaborate on creating the new design standards. So with that, staff recommends approval of the professional services agreement with King Design Collaborative in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to create a new form-based code for the historic East Winter Garden neighborhood. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from the commission? We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, and the other discussion, any discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Site plan for twelve hundred Daniels Road.
Thank you. Uh, this is a request for site plan approval for a one-point-five-five acre lot on Daniels Road, directly south of the new grocery store building. The applicant, HCA Florida Osceola Hospital, is proposing to build an eleven thousand five hundred and seventy square foot freestanding emergency room facility. This will be a twenty-four hour facility that offers walk-in accommodations, as well as by ambulance, but will not provide overnight inpatient care. The applicant did receive special exception approval from the planning and zoning board for the proposed use, and the conditions of approval included no helicopters are permitted to land on or near the facility. The facility will provide an onsite ambulance service as to not negatively impact Winter Garden's emergency services. And no sirens are permitted during the loading and unloading of patients. So with that, staff recommends approval of the HCA freestanding emergency room site plan. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the commission? I have several, I guess, questions in concern. You know, personally, I'd just like, from my standpoint, I'd like more time to look at this. Uh, you know, number one, their closest hospital is around Osceola in Seminole County. I know that when you do a freestanding emergency room, you should be running thirty-five miles of the, of the hospital. You know, if they discharge, or somebody wants to be discharged, I can see the A of A kicking in. And, you know, they don't want to go to, uh, one of their two hospitals. I don't know what the, and I've got for the Advent Health, what the emergency rooms, the three that we have, push, uh, ascend to our people now, Health Central, Advent, and Horizon West. And I guess from my standpoint, um, I guess I'd just like a little more time to, to come up with the, and talk these different ones.
We do have the applicant here, and he said he'd be happy to answer if you have any specific questions.
Remind some of my questions, and I'd like to talk to Advent, I'd like to talk to, uh, Relinda Health, you know, for Health Central, and, and just find out, um, you know, what I know there's, talking about treating twenty to twenty-five people here, it's about a thousand square feet.
So, mayor, you want to just postpone it to date uncertainty, get those answers?
I just, well, y'all can do what y'all want, I'm just not comfortable, you know, yes, right now, just from my standpoint.
I, I would like to get more information from all those sources. We need to make the best decision for the city.
And to me, this is kind of important, and I just didn't know about the time to, to get, you know, the answers to all these things, so. I'm not saying that I'm against it, I'm just saying that at this point in time, I just don't feel like I have enough information to make, uh, the decision I feel comfortable with, I guess.
So, you want to do two meetings, three meetings, what do you think, mayor? I know how busy you are.
Yeah, I, uh, no, by the next meeting, I would, I would be ready. I, I think I would get the answers for everything.
You want to, staff, you want to do one or two meetings? One month out? I suppose do a month out, I'll give everyone time to already do it, and I'll put that in for most of them.
I don't know, just thinking, I don't know.
Is there any impact?
Let's find out from staff first, I guess.
Uh, I, I think the applicant wants to proceed as quickly as possible, so, whatever you decide.
Shoot for next meeting to have the answers, and if for some reason they don't, we're not ever get the answers by then, we'll come back and make a recommendation. I'm not gonna push that really any further either, but I would like to be educated a little bit more, I guess. Okay.
You want to hear what they say, or just one time round, or you want to wait?
I just, keep trying to get the answers, wait, then let them, personally, but, you know.
I'm moved that we postpone this until the next city commission meeting. Uh, do you have a date and time, city chairman?
It'll be May ninth.
Yes, it will be May ninth.
Yeah.
Six-thirty, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve and authorize city manager to execute memorandum of understanding between Orange County Boys and Girls Club. Yes, sir?
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Um, the City of Winter Garden Boys and Girls Club of Central Florida and Orange County have agreed to establish a memorandum of understanding to define the roles and responsibilities over the next two years as the Boys and Girls Club transitions from the current location at three oh nine Southwest Crown Point Road, Winter Garden, Florida, to the new and future location at four fifty-nine North Street, Winter Garden, Florida. Land provisions include the city's obligation to provide land, as well as a long-term ground lease, the Boys and Girls Club's responsibility to fund and construct the project for its new location, uh, cited above, and the county's funding contribution towards both the project construction, up to four hundred and forty thousand, and the annual operation for programming, fix that around a hundred thousand. With that, staff recommends approval and authorization for the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between Orange County, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Florida, and the City of Winter Garden. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the commission?
This is to extend, right?
Extend our original MOU that we had in place with the County and Boys and Girls Club, reaffirms the four hundred thousand dollar, uh, commitment from the County and the annual hundred thousand dollars for operating.
And the million and a half of the court?
Just want to say back to you.
Two million, excuse me, two million of the court.
Okay. This, any other questions from the commission? We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Please, motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Shop, dine, and stroll, yes, sir?
Yes, sir, commissioners. The Shop, dine, and stroll event, which will attract and offer shoppers the opportunity to experience our local downtown retailers and restaurants with an exciting twist to win gifts and cash prizes through multiple raffle incentives dubbed as raffle mania. To sweeten the excitement, shoppers will also have a chance to win grand prize, grand cash prizes of five hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, and a hundred dollars. The event will take place all day on Saturday, May fourth, twenty twenty-four, and will include live music, store and restaurant promotions, and will not require any road closures. With that, staff recommends approval of the special event application allowing Shop, dine, and stroll raffle mania event in downtown Winter Garden to take place on Saturday, May fourth, twenty twenty-four. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the commission? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the special event shop, dine, and stroll.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Kids' parade and pancake breakfast, yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Uh, the Winter Garden Masonic Lodge is requesting to hold their annual kids' parade and pancake breakfast from nine AM to eleven AM on July fourth, twenty twenty-four. The event will have approximately twelve hundred people in attendance. Plant Street will be temporarily closed for the parade, and the event setup will begin at seven thirty AM, and everything will be broken down by one. So with that, staff recommends approval of the temporary closure of Plant Street and the Fourth of July Kids Parade and Pancake Breakfast.
Questions from the commission?
We need to approve.
Yeah, well, mayor, no, approve this. Yeah, a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mayor, if we didn't approve this, we would be unelected. That's the most popular kids' parade.
Motion carries unanimously. It is really grown, it's a lot of fun. They do enjoy it. Thank you. Selection of mayor approved him.
Lisa, I have a proposition for you. You want to do it again for another year, and then I'll take over after that? Or what do you want? You tell me, what are you thinking?
I'd like to do it another year, maybe run a year.
You want to do it one more year or two more years, because, uh, and then I'll take over your choice.
Well, this is, this is something that we do every year. You want to?
Actually, it's after the election, based on what the code says. It's after the election. Your next election won't be until twenty twenty-seven.
So it goes that long, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, so do you want to split it up? You do two years, and I'll, so right now, I don't have the time. I'm mentoring a young man, and it's given me a lot of passion. And I figured you want to do it again, plus you need to sit up there at least once. We need to, in two years, he's gonna have to take a night off, or we're forcing him to.
Once he's gonna take it off tonight.
But you definitely need, I got to do it one time, I definitely would like to see you run a couple meetings, but if you're willing to do it two years, I would like to do it, yeah, in three years from now.
Okey-dokey.
So it should be at the end of your next term, I think. I think, no, is it before now?
So, anyway, you're at, right now, is it?
Lisa does it for tissues.
Twenty twenty-six?
We may be able to, I mean, you're the commission.
Yeah, commission, I want you to say.
Yes, we can, maybe.
Yeah, so, I, I think what you.
You want to get places?
That's the agreement you and Lisa were going to make, I think.
Lisa, your, your choice.
It's a bill.
Is that a motion?
Can we reconvene in two years?
Yes, we can.
I think you can change it anytime.
Yeah, you want, I want to.
The commission can change, mayor, on time, anytime, from my understanding it is.
That's like a right, and get fired?
You can quit. You don't get fired, you promote.
The commission has total discretion here, you can, uh, go ahead, uh, make this appointment, uh, now, and it can be changed at any point in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to do it where we just re-meet in two years?
Sure.
Okay.
So you're, you got a motion for Lisa V.
For two years, and then we'll, okay, redo it, so, okay. I love it.
Now, do we have a second?
Second? That was, was, who, whose motion was it?
You just made the motion, you can't motion in a second. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. This is one of them. Yes, sir? Love to give you a name and address, please, sir?
Sure.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. My name's Dr. Jim Sawyer. I live at one eight one one Southern Red Hood Court in Akoi. And it's an honor to be here. My first question was about the clock, but I guess it's right here, right? First, I'd like to say congratulations to Commissioner Jones. That's fantastic. Also congratulate the, uh, city staff for their proclamation this evening. Also, on Thursday, May second, which happens to be the Day of Prayer, which was just mentioned, it's been my honor to be the, uh, chair of the City of Akoi Human Relations Diversity Board. And we're having an event in which, um, hoping to pack the house, is caused, called fostering a sense of belonging. And we're having a guest speaker from UCF, Ginsburg Center for Inclusion and Community Engagement. All are welcome, please help spread the word. The other reason I'm here today, and this is my first time in this beautiful commission, although I do go to the Akoi meetings.
Love like this.
Uh, I, I rarely miss the Akoi meetings. I'm trying to get a better understanding of the City of Winter Gardens' policy in regard to journalism. I wasn't here last year, and I'm not real familiar with the policy, only a little bit of what I read. I do have a, my doctorate is a doctorate education in organizational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. And I've been told that our dissertation process arguably is the roughest in the whole country. We literally meticulously go over every period, every seven colon, every comma, and I did that for most of seven years. So, my concern is I want to make sure that the facts, we have the best chance of getting the best facts from journalists. And analogy, and I like analogies. A police officer, if they stop you or you're part of an accident, they're not gonna let you go and come back later and make a statement. Why? Because the information is freshest in your mind at the, at the time it occurs. So, without knowing more about it, I'm an advocate for journalists being allowed to ask the questions the closest to the time and gather the most up-to-date, most current information. That's just my view. The second point is, as a veteran, my mother's father died in World War Two. My father, as soon as he finished high school, became a Navy reservist, and then the Korean War set out, so he left the Navy and joined the Marine Corps and volunteered to go to Korea. Um, and I'm a Vietnam era veteran. Freedom of the press is one of the freedoms that us veterans, uh, fight, and many of us have died for. So, I'm just here advocating for, um, the journalists to get the information as timely as possible, and, um, so it'll be as accurate as possible. So I'm respectfully asking for y'all to consider relooking at the policy. Thank you for your time, and God bless you all.
All right, can you give us the date and time of your venue again, please?
It's the National Day of Prayer, same day. So it's Thursday, May second, and the time is six fifteen, and it's in the relatively new Akoi City Hall in the city commission chambers.
Thank you.
And thank you for spreading the word. And thank you for spreading your work.
God bless. Semper Fi.
Semper Fi. Anyone else? Manage for our city attorney?
No reports, ma'am, thank you.
City manager?
Yeah, mayor, we've got a presentation on red light schools on traffic cameras that the Chief Graham's going to present. Before we jump into the presentation, if you recall, back in March of 2023, we brought forward a traffic policy plan and approach to how we were going to deal with all of the complaints that the city was receiving regarding speeding. And within that plan, we identified that we were going to use our existing police department with increased efforts. We talked about the utilization of permanent traffic caution measures, temporary traffic caution measures. In addition to that, we also talked about the use of technology to help us reduce the number of complaints and to improve the safety within the city. Since that time and through the development of the budget process, we did include some monies for proceeding with the red light safety program. Since the budget was approved, we've had some legislative action that authorized the use of this technology in school zones. So what we've done is I've asked the chief to put together this program. The company, we're not asking you to make a decision of yea or nay in moving forward with the project. The whole idea here is to give you the information, let you think about it, ask some questions of staff, and they give us some direction at future meetings. And we also realize the fact that we have two new commissioners that haven't had an opportunity to really to receive this, not just this information. The reality is that some of these programs can be controversial, so you need to take that into consideration as you think about all the information that we're putting forward. But the ultimate goal is to increase our safety on roads. And with that, I'll leave it to the chief.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. This kind of ties in with our Vision Zero. It's a goal of the city, as long as the county, to reduce our serious injuries, crashes, especially the fatalities and serious injury crashes. Here's some more statistics. The fatalities, unfortunately, have reached a 16-year high in '21. And on the intersections, we have to worry about pedestrians also. Typical drivers lost 51 hours due to congestion. I think we've all probably been stuck in traffic as a result of a major crash, especially on the six-lane highways. The goal of the red light cameras is to try to change driver behavior. We're looking to get them to stop instead of basically roll right through the red lights. What we're seeing increasingly is the aggressive driving. We've, the commission's already supported additional resources for the police department to address the aggressive driving in the city. And we've taken the task, we've been writing a lot of tickets out here. We have a lot of places we go, we put out a lot of traffic study boxes. But I'm sure you're getting compliance, we still get compliance. And unfortunately, that's the cause, the aggressive driving and the use of cellular devices while they're driving, distracting. A couple of years ago, there was a serious crash at Avalon and 50 where a driver wasn't paying attention, crashed into the rear end of another one. Truck actually hit a car and flipped that car on top of the crossing guard that was in the crosswalk. It almost killed her. She was able to rehab. But that's a result of distracted driving. So employing the red light cameras, it, studies have shown that it can reduce the fatal crash rate by 21%. In New York City, their citations are reduced by 77% after deployment, which shows you the drivers are not paying attention to stopping at the red lights so they don't issue the citations. And that's the goal, to not have to issue any citations. Here's a couple of myths versus facts. And the bottom-left corner is where the information came from. First, it's unfair because it only targets certain drivers. And of course, you don't know who the driver is when you're processing a citation when you determine if it's a violation or not. And it's not popular with the public. And surveys have shown that the majority of the public supports the use of automated enforcement. In fact, the commission has challenged the police department to try to use technology as best possible. And this is one of those things that other agencies use. This is how the system basically works in general. It activates when the vehicle approaches the intersection at a red light. And then the first image shows the vehicle approaching the intersection at the red light. Second image shows the vehicle proceeding through and passing the intersection at a red light. And then they show a close-up image of the license plate itself, which would also show location, date, and time. It also shows the duration of the yellow and red light stamped on the images. It also takes a 12-second digital video of the vehicle going through the red light. Here's an example of one such event. This is the car that's about to go through the red light. Most of the providers, they basically, once contracted, they will come in and they provide pretty much everything. And that's why it's on the budget, that's why it was a rather pricey item. Because they come in, they install everything, they get permitting. And we permit it for proposed 16 cameras. And basically, we'll identify those intersections in just a second. The results for us would be increased safety. Actually, we gain resources by, basically, we can devote our attentions elsewhere rather than those particular intersections. It's automated evidence. And hopefully, the goal is to promote compliance so we reduce people that are running on the red lights. And as you might, everybody realizes that we have a lot of commuters that come through town and they're traveling from Lake County into Orange County. So during the rush hour, traffic could get quite congested. These statistics here, I'll read them out in case you can't read them. Gallery here. Our most frequent crash intersection is Stony Brook West and Winter Garden-Vilain. In the last five years, we have 457 crashes at that intersection alone. West Colonial and Dillard, 436 crashes. West Colonial and Winter Garden-Vilain, 308 crashes. West Colonial, Avalon, or Tildenville School Road, 266. And West Colonial and Park is 237. Basically, we're proposing to, to do the four highest crash-volume intersections, hoping to get those reductions that other jurisdictions have realized.
Chief Sawyer, has the changes at Marsh and Stony Brook intersection with Avalon, has the crash rates gone down since we've done that intersection improvement? Or is, it's not enough data points yet?
I believe it has because there was a lot of, a lot of people trying to cut in when that was not a dedicated street, a little street ahead, it was supposed to be turned. So you get to people that are refusing to let people in and you actually have people ramming each other because they're determined to cut. And the other ones are determined not to let them in.
Sorry, aside mark, go ahead.
This is some of the crash data, what it takes to investigate the crashes. Basically, on our six-lane roads especially, it'll take three to four officers to work the crash scene. And typically, you're receiving lane blockage, not one, two lanes. And we'll also have fire apparatus around us if there's injuries. The average time on crash, and we've crunched the numbers on this, the average time without an injury is 53 minutes is what it takes us to investigate and clear a scene. Because unfortunately, there are newer vehicles, they're designed to crumple and they can't be rolled out of the way. They're going to require a tow truck. The average time on crashes, we've got intersection for, for an injury, is one hour and 44 minutes. So you can realize that once there's a serious crash, the traffic is going to be messed up for quite a while. And even after we clear the road, the backup residual effect results in other crashes that are down the line oftentimes.
Chief, clarification, this doesn't include any, any fire personnel that's dedicated to this, right?
Correct. This is just police officers' time on scene, not fire. Also, recently, the Florida Legislature passed a new House Bill 657, which authorizes municipalities to install speed cameras in school zones. And basically, if you speed greater than 10 miles an hour in a school zone, you can receive automated citation for speeding. Infractions basically can be enforced 30 minutes prior and 30 minutes after the posted times. Those citations are $100. The red light camera citations, by the way, are $158. And most red light camera companies will provide the service to government entities for little or no cost. As far as the enforcement goes, citizens will have the option to contest the violations and have the cases heard in front of a magistrate or heard in front of a judge if they request it. The city can use the services of a magistrate for administrative hearings, which can be held at City Hall and for, it says UTC, that's Uniform Traffic Citation Hearings. An attorney can be hired that represents the city at the courthouse on Store and Road. Magistrate can also hear court enforcement cases for the city. If red light camera fines are not paid, then a haul is placed on the vehicle registration so they can't renew it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might ask.
I just did, there's an accident everyone, you're looking at 35,000 minutes a year, 590 hours or 40-hour week, that's 15 weeks. The policeman are tied up there if there's an accident there per year. That doesn't count the fire. So if y'all, everybody kind of skim through this, study it, and come back with a question, I think we probably have a few questions.
I have a couple opinions, comments, I'll share with you, Mr. Young, commissioner. So I've, I've looked at this both ways, been impartial. Have we, what I'd like to consider is, have we considered looking at the placebo effect? Because I will tell you, if there is a sign there and it's yellow, I'm stopping no matter how far it's yellow, and it, it works. And there's two signs to every story. There's the people on the other side. My concern is that the companies are eager to collect the fees. They, they just rack up and, and if we do something, we need to make sure that someone internally is reviewing or some kind of stopgap checks. I think that's what we proposed before.
Yep.
We have this on the table, I think you were your mayor too when we did it. So it's, there's, it does save lives. There's no doubt, it causes me to stop. I think anybody that knows it, you see that flash, but I'm in favor of technology in general, looking for more information, so.
A couple of points if I, if I may, mayor. Basically, when there's violation, it goes to the company. They send the videos of the violations to us. One of our staff members reviews the videos. So if someone is going through the red light, it's a clear violation going straight ahead. If they're making the right turns, which is the biggest point of contention. Because technically, you're supposed to stop at a stop bar and then you ease out to see if your way is clear. A lot of people don't bother. And you go out and they stop past the stop bar. That triggers a violation. But typically, if they did come to a stop reasonably, we wouldn't issue a citation for that kind of violation. But you also have the, the wild card if there's pedestrians in the crosswalk at the time. So there's other issues with that. I would also like to add that typically, when you contract with a company, it's usually a five-year commitment. So if we become unhappy with the company or we take a different direction, we're on the hook.
Thank you, chief. We'll, I'm sure we'll come back with some questions. But thank you. We'll take one or two, I guess.
You want to ask one?
Yes. Chief, could you probably give your name and address?
I'm sorry, my name is James Snyder. I live at 229 Harvard Drive in Winter Garden. I apologize for not standing, I'm just handicapped.
Okay.
When a red light violation is recorded on camera, we, it obviously takes a picture of the license plate. So the owner of that car is the one that gets the fine. How do we determine who's actually driving the car?
The owner gets the citation, not the driver.
Are there points assessed for this?
There are.
Okay. So the owner has the citation, it's up to the owner then to... Okay, so that being the case, if someone else is, is allowed to drive your car and racks up five or six of these, is there a penalty for repeated violations in instance?
No, sir.
Just like we're down the hallway.
Actually, you said you take more questions than I have one.
I have to throw them out. Okay. Commissioner Sharp?
I want to start a little light tonight. What I noticed was we got our two new commissioners. We got the seasoned one next to me. And what I see is, I see a, a first-time ever Winter Garden, where we have a majority of females on the commission. My wife makes smarter decisions than I do. And there is a, a rule for the spouses. If you've survived a election, your marriage will last forever. Another observation is Lisa's down over there. And I remember her first meeting, it was a lot like yours tonight, Chloe, where, where you're getting in the groove and you start going. And you see her now, she's Mayor Pro 10. So that's, I just, it makes me smile to see the changes in Winter Garden and us continuing to move in the right direction. I don't think that's, I'm going to leave on a positive note tonight.
I just want to thank staff for all of your work that you do to make our job a little easier. So thank you for your hard work.
Commissioner Sharp?
I just want to say thank you, thank you for having one here. And I'm looking forward to working with everybody and also my constituents. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I forgot to say congratulations last meeting, Collins. So congratulations on being re-elected.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And welcome, Eliana. And I did say congratulations last week.
And congratulations, Mayor Pro 10.
Thank you. And then as far as the proclamation, yeah, we appreciate staff very much. We're blessed to have you.
Yes, we are. With that, we will adjourn.